Welcome everybody to the special call meeting today, our commissioners, staff, members of the public. And before we get started, and I have a prepared statement, but I think one of the most powerful things that we have, or the most powerful thing we have in the situation we're in is prayer. And so I'd like to begin today with prayer. Before we begin this meeting, so pray with me if you will, and wherever you are. Lord, we enter this time in uncharted waters, but they're not uncharted for you. We know that you know the end of the story. Your word tells us that you love us, you want the best for us, and Lord, we claim that promise today as we go through this very difficult time. We pray for safe travels today for Chairman Browning and Bonnie and their family as they are en route to Atlanta to welcome a new grandchild. Lord, we left up our first responders, they are in harm's way, and now they have to deal with this COVID-19. As we began to open our local economy to up, we pray for wisdom and discernment for members of our community and for our, and for our store owners, Lord, that they would keep themselves and others safe and follow the guidelines that have been outlined. Lord, we pray that you'd give us wisdom and clarity of thought today as we deliberate the issues before us, and we pray it all in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, again, welcome Alan, if you, are you on yet? Okay, this is a prepared statement that I will read. Welcome to Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, special call meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. In an effort to adhere to the guidelines set forth by the CDC for COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held via video teleconference. The public has simultaneous access to the meeting. The meeting will be streamlined, streamed online for public viewing through the Glen County Board of Commissioners Facebook and YouTube pages. Commissioners, remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. I'm going to start the meeting with a roll call, and if you would answer present. Commissioner Booker?
Present.
All right. Commissioner Browning is absent, Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Neal?
Present.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Present.
Commissioner Brunson, I'm here. Staff, Mr. Hours?
Present.
Mr. Mumford?
Present.
Duane Patel?
Present.
Matthew Kent? Matthew Wood? Trey Monroe?
I'm present.
Tiffany Hill?
Present.
Dave Austin?
Present.
Paul Andrews?
Present.
Monica Harden?
Monica, you with us? I'm here for Monica, this is Judy Denigan.
Okay Judy, you're going to take her place today, okay. Judy, thank you, and you are here noted. Any other staff that I failed to to call?
Yeah Byron Jones, I'm here.
Okay.
Bill, Catherine Downs, I'm here.
Okay Catherine, thank you, all right, duly noted. All right, first item for discussion, consideration, voting on the following. Receive a presentation regarding a refinancing option for current debt. Trey Monroe, Trey is going to be presenting this item, and he'll be presenting based off the link on the agenda, and I don't think you have a PowerPoint, do you Trey?
No sir, I do not.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, well, appreciate y'all inviting me to the meeting and happy to be here and speak to you again. Wish I could be there in person, and we could all be together in person, but you know that we're all doing the best we can. I would just ask, I guess, Alan or Mr. Hours, if, I mean, did you have any comments you want to make before I, go through the bullet points we prepared, or you want me to just dive in?
I'll be glad to. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think you're aware that what Mr. Monroe is going to speak to us today, regards the possible refinancing of the 2015 airport bonds, and lease purchase agreement for fire equipment. We had the opportunity currently with the bond market to refinance both of these. The one bond and the one lease at a lower interest rate, that can save the county considerable amount of money. And Mr. Monroe represents Stifel, and he has represented Glen County before with these, in fact, with the airport bonds and also the 2015 issue of the, equipment lease that we did, but that is not eligible for refunding at that time, nor would we want to do that because of the, initial financing arrangement. But we do have an opportunity for refunding, and a few weeks ago, the board signed an agreement to authorize Stifel to proceed, to review the opportunities, and that's what Mr. Monroe is here today to provide to you, an overview of what the, first, the background of the bonds and the lease, and then what the opportunity presents and what it would look like, and the potential savings for the county. So with that, Mr. Monroe, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so this refinancing contemplates two existing obligations of the county. The first being the 2015 B revenue bonds that were issued through the Brunswick-Glen County Development Authority. Those funded the expansion of the North Apron and the Eastern Aviation Area of the Golden Isles Airport. And then the second would be to refinance two lease purchase agreements the county executed through ACCG, for the acquisition of eight fire trucks. Currently, the 2015 B revenue bonds are outstanding at an average rate of 3.01%. Those are taxable bonds, and then the ACCG lease agreements are outstanding, at an average rate of 2.82%, and those are tax exempt bonds. The 2015 B bonds are outstanding in an amount of about just north of $5.7 million, and the lease agreements are outstanding in an amount just north of 3.5 million. Both of those obligations can be refinanced at any time without penalty currently. So what we would do in this situation is look at one, one bond issued to be executed through the Brunswick and Glen County Development Authority. This would make it a little bit easier in that you have one set of documents, you're having to call one, one set of meetings, and it'll just, it would make the execution of these a lot easier. Plus, it also happens to be the way that we, you could do it, and ultimately secure the lowest interest rate, for bonds that would replace these existing bonds. Right now, and these rates are as of last week, you know, just before I get into the rates and the savings, I mean, the markets are, as everyone probably is well aware, pretty, pretty volatile and erratic at the moment. So I mean, you know, what we've looked at was good on the day that we looked at it, it does not mean it will be good tomorrow or the next day. And that is the principal reason why we're suggesting to move forward in the fashion that we're going to present here. And maybe I'll talk about that for a second. The 2015 bonds were done with a public bond offering where the county, prepared an official statement, went to the rating agencies to get a public credit rating, and issued those bonds in the public market. So they were sold to, you know, could have been hundreds of different investors. The way we would propose looking at this is in what's called a private placement or a private debt offering. That would eliminate the need to go to the rating agency to ask for that public rating, and it would also eliminate, the need to prepare and publish that official statement that was done in 2015. That in and of itself saves the county probably seventy to eighty thousand dollars of upfront costs, in terms of the expense of putting a bond issue together. So not only is it, is it reduced the time that's necessary to do the issue, it also reduced the expense of doing it. The other benefit, again, in this market to doing a private offering is that we can go, if it's the board's pleasure, we can go and put together a bid package, provide that package to a number of different, potential investors. We can get proposals back from those potential investors to see where their rates are, to see exactly how many dollars can be saved. And if the savings is not at a level that the county thinks is sufficient, we would simply not close the issue. And there's no expense to the county for us proceeding down that road to determine if there is a viable option out there in the private market. With that said, looking at those private placement rates for bonds as of last week, we were seeing taxable bonds, so to line up with the 2015 B issue, to refinance that bond of about 1.36%. So you would be bringing the rate down from 3.01 to 1.36. That would save the county on that piece of the issue, or piece of the bond, would save the county somewhere between 308,000 and 341,000 dollars, after the expense of doing the deal. So that's, those are the true dollars that would come back to the county in savings. On the ACCG lease agreement refinancing piece, we were seeing rates for that of about 1.1%. Again, bringing it down from 2.82, which would produce another 104 to 109,000 dollars of savings. Again, after, after all the cost to execute one of these. Two options in the way that they can take that level of savings. In total, that would equate to roughly, you know, three, 412 to 450,000 dollars of savings. They can't take that savings over some period of time, either two, three, or 10 fiscal years, or it could elect to take that savings as quickly as possible, and in this case, they could recognize all of that savings in the, 2021 fiscal year if you chose to do that. There's really no difference in doing it that way, that just becomes a, really, it's a policy choice of the county as to how you take that savings. The weight on those new bonds would not change materially, materially from one alternative to the other. The cost of doing the issue does not change from picking one alternative over the other. It really is just a matter of preference in terms of how you would elect to take that savings. As I mentioned, that 400, 400 to 450,000 of savings is after what we think would be all the cost to execute this, which we currently estimate to be about 115,000 dollars, to pay any attorneys that we needed to have involved, from either the county's side or the development authority's side, or the, ultimately, the bank that buys the bonds, their counsel. It would include any cost for us, Stifel, to run the bid process and anything else. So we're, again, we're pegging the cost to do this of about 115,000 dollars. But that would not have a, an impact on your current budget. Typically, the cost to do these is paid for out of proceeds from the new bond issue. So I mean, another way to think about it is, given the rates I mentioned, your savings is, you know, somewhere north of, 550,000 dollars, or you know, 520 to 550,000 dollars, and you, you give 115,000 of that back to the folks that put it all together. So the, the savings that comes back to the county is somewhere in that 400 to 450,000 dollar range. I think that about summarizes it, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, there's no cost to the county in us going down the road to get some proposals to see if we get a rate back that would work and would save, a sufficient amount of money that the county thinks is worthwhile moving forward with. And then, you know, from there, if, if that's, if that's your pleasure, we would go through that process. It takes about three weeks to, to put that process together and get some proposals back. If we got a proposal that looked advantageous, we would then, need the, both the development authority and the county to probably call a meeting in the current environment. We could try to line it up with a regularly scheduled meeting, but it may be that we would need to try to ask folks to get together on an off day, to sign paperwork and the like.
Mr. Monroe, thank you very much for that report, and thank you for hawking this thing, for looking at it and looking at the opportunity that this might afford the county. Commissioners, you got any questions or comments?
Hey, with the savings that he's presented here, I don't know what question you could ask, really, I mean, you know, you sticking several hundred thousand dollars back into the kitty for the taxpayers benefit. I think all I've heard is pros on this thing. Are there any cons that we don't know about, or anything that could be detrimental to the thing, Trey?
You know, the one, the one thing to consider, and if I'd let it drive, drive the bus too much, but, so when you do a refinancing like this, given the, the short term nature of these bonds, there's only about 10 years left, I think. Well, on the case of the airport bonds, there's about 10 years left on that issue, and in case of the ACCG leases, there's about seven years left. So this would very likely be the last time that you refinance either of those. So the one thing to consider would be, think we'll have a better opportunity somewhere down the road to do this. I mean, my crystal ball is not any clearer than anyone else's. So I mean, I, I, you know, if you waited for another time to do it, would you get a better rate? Perhaps, but you also may never see a better rate. Typically, the way refinancings and savings works, for a period of time, your debt extends, relative to how low a rate you can get, drives the amount of savings. And so, for example, if you waited a year or two years to do the refinancing, you've really only got eight years left or five years left to, to save money on the existing issues. So by waiting, you might get a lower rate, perhaps, but you may not save as much money just because there's not enough time left, to generate the savings. So I mean, really, that's kind of how we look at these things. Typically, you know, the best practice, I think if you were to look at, standards from GFOA and the like, and other, you know, industry metrics for public finance, typically, if you can save 3% of however much principal you're refunding, you know, the best practice is to go ahead and take that savings. In this case, the county would be saving, you know, north of 4%, maybe somewhere close to 5%, depending on where these rates shake out. So I mean, I think if you were in a position to collect, an amount of savings that was better than what the industry best practice is, I don't really know how anyone could fault you for moving forward. If we got the rates back and it didn't produce enough savings, then we'd, we'd probably suggest let's, let's hold our powder and try again, you know, in a better environment.
And plus, I guess, if two, if you continued on with the way we are right now, you'd still, in other words, we've got an opportunity to save several hundred thousand dollars if we do this now. But at the same time, if we, if we hesitated on it and, and went, say, like you said, another year, maybe two years, we're still going to be paying what we're paying now. So if, if the opportunities, in other words, the amount of money that we would save now would, would be jeopardized, and, and once again, seeing how clear the crystal ball is. So really, I mean, I don't, my side of it, I just can't do where we go wrong here.
I have one question, Trey, and why I certainly support this. What caused us to not do a private offering the first time? Why did we go public, do you know?
Because, I mean, frankly, the, the interest rates were better, and at that point in time, these were longer term obligations. So for example, with airport bonds, those were 15 year bonds when we did them in 2015, and on a taxable basis, and it just happened to be at the time that a public offering of taxable bonds was a lot cheaper than doing a private placement. Even, even though the cost to do a public bond issue on the front end is a little bit more expensive than a private placement, the rate was significantly lower.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments?
It's, that was just probably not enough debt to, to really, I mean, I think, when those leases were done, it was about 5 million dollars of principal, and that's kind of right at the tipping point for, what makes sense to do a public and private bond offering. I mean, the smaller your bond issue is, the more the cost to do the bond issue impacts your, your APR, if you will, your, your true cost of borrowing. When you have, you know, a 10 or 15 million dollar bond issue, the cost of doing that issue gets spread out over 15 years and absorbed by a larger par amount. So it, it's, it's just kind of the math of the way it was when those two, two existing obligations were done.
Commissioners, anyone got any objection to our moving forward with this? I see very little downside. Anybody?
I have no objection.
I have no objection.
Well, Trey, I guess you've got your marching orders here. Let's, let's see what kind of rate we can get, and bring it back to us in the form of some kind of proposal, and we'll, we'll hopefully vote to save us some money.
We will, we will get to work, and again, appreciate the opportunity and happy to be with y'all.
Well, we appreciate you staying on top of it, thanks so much.
Okay, have a good day.
Be safe. All right. Item number two, receive an update on proposed amendment to domestic animals ordinance. This report's going to be given by Tiffany Hill, is going to be presenting this item, and, and she has a PowerPoint as well.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me this afternoon. Officer Gerald Ruiz was going to join me, but unfortunately, he's out responding to a call for a adopted dog. So I'll be doing this without him this afternoon. A humane tethering ordinance is very near and dear to my staff's heart. Approximately 75% of the calls that we get of an animal welfare nature are related to dogs who are chained in some manner in someone's backyard. At this time, we don't have an enforceable ordinance to improve situations where the owner does want to, do the right thing for the dog, or to prevent neglect or even cruelty that happens when dogs live outside. So this ordinance will provide clear standards to ensure more humane treatment of dogs who live outside here in the Golden Isles, and also will help to ensure the effectiveness of my officers and our partners in law enforcement, because it will give us the ability to write citations and fines. Just a quick overview of tethering ordinances in the state of Georgia. It's estimated that over 50% of Georgia residents live in It's estimated that over fifty percent of Georgia residents live in communities that have some sort of tethering restriction, whether that is a tethering ban or a restricted tethering ordinance. So our proposal in county is a humane tethering ordinance. And a tether or tethering that I think is important for this ordinance is that it means to restrain an animal by tying the animal to any inanimate object or structure. Tethering shall not include using a leash to walk a dog or a cat, or a rabbit, in my case, my rabbits are leash-trained. This ordinance will ban the use of heavy chains such as logging chains and tow chains. Anything greater than ten percent of a dog's body weight would not be allowed. It will ban dogs being chained on vacant and abandoned properties, which is something that unfortunately we do run into on a regular basis. It also mandates a minimum tether length of six-plus feet, and that the tether has to be clear of entanglements so that a dog does not have the ability to try to jump off of the porch or jump over the fence and end up hanging himself, which, again, is something that we do run into, uh, when we are out in the community. This proposal will also, um, require access to shelter, food, and water. So why consider this ordinance? Again, as I mentioned in the beginning, this will provide certain consistent and enforceable minimum care standards. Um, and it gives the police department and my animal control officers the opportunity to educate donor, dog owners on proper care. You know, our, our goal is always to educate before inflicting any sort of punishment. Studies have shown that when ordinances like these are in place, there is a reduction in the number of neighbors complaining about their neighbor's dog barking constantly, getting out and running at large, or, um, other undesirable behaviors of tethered dogs, which we'll expand on in just a moment. Um, and it also reduces the threat to public safety. Chained dogs are more likely to become aggressive because they are frustrated and bored. So tethered dogs in our community, um, statistics show that a dog that is chained or tethered is two-point-eight times more likely to bite an adult and five-point-four times more likely to bite a child. They may have little to no socialization, and they sometimes are victims of stray dogs who come into their yards and attack them, and because they're tied, um, to a fixed object, they have nowhere to protect themselves. In, uh, two-seven, uh, two thousand seventeen, State Farm Insurance reported nationally three thousand six hundred and eighteen dog-related injury claims totaling more than a hundred and thirty-two million dollars specifically for, um, incidents that involved chained or tethered dogs. And, um, the dog in the upper corner there, you can see that he has an embedded collar. Um, it looks like a large chain has been used to tether him, and as he has grown, the chain has not been fitted properly, um, it should not be used at all. But this one has not been fitted properly, and as you can see, as the dog grows, the chain is actually embedding in his neck and can cause permanent, even life-threatening damage. The dog down at the bottom, that's Yancy. Yancy's not in Glenn County, but he's nearby, and he's looking for a new home. Um, he has been chained, as you can see, for his entire life. And even though Yancy is an absolutely gorgeous golden retriever, um, his owner has passed away, and he's looking for a new home. People who are interested in taking him into their families have been warned to be very cautious because he does not have much interaction with human beings, and he, um, it's, there is concern that he may actually, um, have aggressive behaviors because he has not had the opportunity to engage with people because he's been chained out in the backyard. Here in our community, um, of course, the names have been changed to protect, uh, protect the victim. This is, we're calling this dog Laundry Line. These photos were just taken on Friday by one of my officers. This dog is, um, a laundry line is used to tie him to the poles in the existing laundry line that is there. As you can, it's difficult to see, but you can see that he is wrapped around the pole multiple times. There is no shelter for him, so when the sun moves so that the house is not providing shade, he will not have any shade or any way to get out of any rain or storms that may come through. And as you can see on the side, this is what the owners are, um, saying they are doing for him, for his food and water. So there has been a citation issued in this situation, and my officer will follow back up, um, on a regular basis to, um, encourage the owners to improve the living conditions for Laundry Line. Having an ordinance like this would help us, uh, have even more of a legal ground to stand on to assist him, to have better living conditions. I'd also like to introduce you to Hank. Um, Officer Holland, uh, was called out to respond, and thanks to her diligence, because when she responded to the call, uh, at first, she was unable to locate the dog that the neighbor was claiming was in the backyard. And you can see the arrows pointing to where Hank was living at the time that, uh, Officer Holland removed him from the home. He had been chained in a position where the, uh, chain was so short, he was unable to lift his head up off of the ground, and he was in a permanent crouched position and had been in that position for much of the nine months of his life. He is a puppy. Um, and when Officer Holland cut him free, he wagged his tail, and he whined, and he tried to climb into her arms. When she tried to stand him up, though, because he had been held in a crouched position, um, for so long, he was unable to straighten his legs to be able to stand up. One of the saddest things about Hank's situation was that there was a full bag of dog food three feet from him, but because of the short distance of his tether, he could see the dog food, but he was not able to access the dog food. Um, and also, um, his eyes are permanently damaged. Um, his pupils are permanently dilated from being buried in the trash and, um, not having access to the sunlight. And you can see on the far side, um, the photo that was taken of him when, um, he came into our shelter here and then went into a medical foster situation with a volunteer. Unfortunately, Hank's owner has contacted us in an attempt to get her dog back because she does not feel that she has violated the law in this living situation. So the question is, why not ban tethering altogether? As you saw, there are many communities in Georgia where they have enacted a complete anti-tethering ban. Our goal at this time is not to be out there removing dogs from caring, but uneducated or perhaps low-income families. Um, we know that, um, in Glenn County, there is a large number of homes, a significant number of homes that do not have fenced yards. And the Humane Society approximately five years ago did a study that showed that pet ownership is saturated in Glenn County. And what that means is that most of the owners who have the ability to have a pet here in Glenn County have a pet. So, um, access to adopters for a large influx of dogs coming in, um, is not available to us. And as I mentioned, approximately seventy-five percent of our animal welfare calls, which just last year was five hundred and thirty-three calls, are related to dogs who are chained. So if we were to have an anti-tethering, uh, ordinance, then we would see a significantly large influx of dogs on a regular basis in. And we do not have the resources to be able to accommodate for that influx. Um, communities such as Columbia County and other areas of, um, partners, or, or peers in animal control where they have enacted anti-tethering ordinances, have had to, um, dedicate a full-time staff person or add additional staffing just to respond to all of the calls, um, from the community about dogs who are tethered in the backyard. So what we want to do is we want to use this as an opportunity to educate and to continue to assist the dog owners in our community who want to be responsible dog, dog owners, but perhaps don't have a fenced yard, or they are, um, in a rental where the rental says that they must keep their dog outside of the house. The community helps us out in, by donating dog houses to us. And my officers, when they go out to a call where there is a family who wants to take care of their dogs but lacks the ability to purchase a dog house, we can give them one of the donated dog houses. So for, I just wanted to share an example of some, uh, opportunity that we, we would use to educate the public. The small, uh, terrier mix there, he is, um, in what we would, uh, typically see in majority of the cases that we go out to. And while he does have a house, and it appears that he may have food and water bowls, he has a very short lead. Um, the home, the home is located on the ground, um, on dirt instead of maybe up on concrete blocks. As we know, it can be very muddy here in, uh, southeast Georgia. And so we would encourage the family to just make some tweaks, um, to his living environment, and of course, encourage them to spend as much time socializing with him, taking him for walks, playing with him while he's not, uh, chained to his house as possible. Um, and then you can see the graphic that's on the side there is a graphic that we use to help educate people on a more humane way to, um, tether their dog in their yard. Although, as in this graphic, I would add putting the cinder blocks underneath the house so that the house is up off of the grass. So in summary, we were respectfully asking that you consider approving, um, the draft we presented to you of a humane tethering ordinance. And, um, looking toward the future, we will hope to be speaking with you soon about adding a livestock farm animal ordinance and a definition to our ordinances for what the term shelter means. Um, we do have, uh, sometimes, um, long conversations with citizens in our community as to what that term shelter means, um, when it comes to their dogs that are living outside. And I just want to end the presentation by sharing with you a current photo of Hank. Hank was the dog that was living in the trash heap chained three feet from the dog food. He is healing very well. He's available here for adoption at Glenn County Animal Control. He's been with us since November. He hasn't yet been adopted, and he has been turned down for transport. But, um, he is a wonderful, energetic young dog, and, uh, he just doesn't like to hang out with other dogs. So that's why he's been just a little bit more challenging to place in an adopted situation. Are there any questions?
Tiffany, on the, um, the, the wording that you have put into this, is there anything that, that, that could be, or, or we could consider to be added to this? You mentioned a while ago about the horrible condition that, that Hank was being kept under and that the owner, uh, had, had attempted to get the dog back and didn't, didn't see the harm that was being done. I mean, is, I guess my question is, I, y'all, y'all, y'all have taken Hank over, and he's, he's up for adoption, but go, go back to the, to the, uh, owner here that didn't think that they were doing anything wrong. Is, is, is that, that's hard for me to conceive, what you just said there. It just blows me away to see an animal in that, that bad a shape, and somebody, a human being, would not recognize the fact that that, that is, that's just wrong. What, what do we have to control that part of it, if anything? I mean, is, uh, you cited, you cited the owner, and, and, but go ahead. I'm, I just comment on what, what is the, what is the, um, uh, results of, of finding something like this and having an owner with that attitude?
So in a situation like this, because, um, we were able to determine that, um, Hank was going to, um, very soon, very likely, um, pass away from the severity of the cruelty that he was receiving, we were able to charge the owner with cruelty, um, animal cruelty charges. So the tethering ordinance, um, been used in this situation with Hank? We would use animal cruelty laws for Hank. However, our hope is, is that by putting out these standards in this ordinance, perhaps, um, you know, owners can, again, be educated, and, um, more dogs in the future may not get to the situation such as Hank was forced to live in.
Do you, do you think that, that we could go, could, could you use the term strict ordinance in regard to what, what you're proposing here? This is a, this, by that, I mean, is it, is this just, uh, changing it from what it was? Or is this something that you believe is, um, in coordination with, with, you know, other, other, um, humane laws and so forth? And I mean, is it, is this, um, I mean, you know, you, you hear people say, well, they've got a very strict speeding law on, on, on the highway there. Could you refer to this as, as the same thing as far as the tethering law goes?
Uh, yes, as far as a humane tethering ordinance is versus an anti-tethering ordinance, I believe that this ordinance is a very strong ground for us to stand on, and it's very detailed. We looked at ordinances from other communities around the state of Georgia as well as outside of Georgia. And, um, things that we added that are not in all other ordinances are, um, uh, statements such as, um, use of tow chains or log chains as a tether or collar for a tethered animal would be banned in this ordinance. An animal being tethered not confined to the owner property, which we do have an issue that we're dealing with right now, where, um, there is a property owner who changed their dog, changed their dog on the edge of their property so that the dog spends most of its time on the other property. Also, you know, we have in here that the tether, um, uh, could not become entangled with other animals or other objects, and that the use of prong, pinch, and choke collars would not be acceptable as a method, um, in, uh, chaining or tethering an animal.
Right. Well, anybody else got, got anything?
Where, where are we? Uh, Tiffany and Aaron, I guess, uh, when do you anticipate, um, having something to bring to us? Uh, these pictures and these stories are just absolutely heartbreaking, and I'm not sure we don't need a tethering law for the owners, but...
That's kind of what I was getting at, Bill.
But, uh, what is, uh, what, when do you anticipate bringing something to us? Aaron, you, you there?
That would be a question for Aaron.
Commissioners, we can, if, if the board wishes to move forward, we can have this ready for the, um, your next, your meeting. I'm looking at the calendar right now, so that we can do that, uh, on May seventh, I believe it is.
Yeah. You'll get that, you'll get that out to us in advance so that we can, uh, go through it and, uh, well, I, I just, um, Tiffany, thank you. I don't know how you do what you do. It's just, uh, I couldn't do it, but, uh, thank you for your, uh, what you're doing out there for these animals. And, uh, anybody got anything else, uh, they want to have?
Commissioner Brunson, no. I'm just very much in favor of, of having a tethering law. I do want to make sure that, uh, as, as we heard on the local radio show, that, that we don't encumber people that their dog typically lives inside, but they'll put it outside, uh, and tether it for a while so they can get sunshine. We want to make sure that we're not punishing people that are legitimate caregivers to their pets that, uh, that have this provision so their, their pet can be outside from town.
Well, said, Commissioner. I, I think I heard the, the word on that same talk show was common sense for our, um, our enforcement people, and I, I think they certainly demonstrate that every day, so.
We'd much prefer to educate and communicate with, um, the citizens in the community rather than go right in and try to, you know, slap a fine on them or take their dog away from them.
Yep, for sure.
Tiffany, could, is there a way that we, once we get this in place right here, that we can make sure, uh, maybe included in some of the, uh, ads we put in the paper or something like that to make sure that people, uh, don't use ignorance as an excuse? And, and I mean, because I mean, this, like Bill said, I mean, some of those pictures are horrible. And, and, uh, we just need to make sure that the folks out there know that, that we do have codes and ordinances, and especially this one, and that, that, that change has been made, and it will be enforced to the, to the absolute maximum. I think, uh, in a situation, uh, where you've got, uh, what you showed us in those photographs is, is deplorable. I mean, it's just something that I think that the average human being out there is just, uh, I don't, I don't know. I don't know another word for it, but I just want to make sure nobody has an excuse when you or your guys go around there and find an animal in such shape that they would have anything other to say than, you know, I don't want to hear them say, I didn't know.
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at, you know? And most of the time, when you have a traffic stop or a police officer stops you, he'll tell you in a minute ignorance is no excuse. So I would really like for us to be able to include this change and the teeth that we are putting into it. And let, make sure that the public understands that this is something that's going to be in stone.
Yes, absolutely. I'm already in anticipation that it would be acceptable to you all. I have already started to put together a multifaceted marketing campaign, humane education campaign to get the messaging out.
Thank you very much. I think this is a huge step forward in a long time coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Anybody got anything else for Tiffany? Great work, guys. Thank you so much. Item number three, receiving update on SPOLOST 2016 projects. And this is going to be presented by Dave Austin and Paul Andrews, which I understand have been rehearsing this thing for a couple of weeks now. So, guys, you got it.
All right, we're here. There's the first slide. First update is Elmig. Elmig started this week. They are right now in the traffic circle by the roundabout at Federica and Demery. They should be working on the improvement there and then milling and resurfacing the traffic circle.
And this is the Canal Road Right-of-Way Widening Project. We're, EMC is working to finalize their acquisition plans with those. And we've already been approved with the acquisition funds to go out and make first contact and start acquiring the right-of-way. The, we're getting into the permitting for the wetlands impacts. And EMC is trying to get us a draft of the layout and design in detail so we can start looking at that. The intersection at Glen County Parkway, I'm expecting a draft of that updated plan towards the end of this week to get out and take a look at and get comments back to them.
Please stop us if you have any questions. Sea Island at Demery. This, we're still, we're still in the, waiting for DNR to put it out for public notice. Once it's out of public notice, that's 30 days. Once that's done, we'll be able to put it out for bid. Federica and Demery Roundabout, that's, they've started that two days ago, and they're working right now there. This is Ocean Mallory, a sidewalk improvement, intersection improvement area. That started on the 15th of April, and they were working that, forming the curb up today. Kingsway and Federica, they're finishing up the concept. We expect the concept in about the 28th of April. And at that point, we will review the concept, get approval on this concept, move forward to final design, and start working the MOU with Sea Island. East Beach Causeway in Demery, that started, notes to proceed was last week. We got hit by a little rain last week. They've started doing their, what do you call it? The, yes, clearing and site work and silt screens. And they should be blocking off East Beach Causeway next week. Signage is, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I can't see it, and I've got a text from someone says they can't see it, can't see or hear anything off the feed. I don't know if that's the case or not.
All right.
Let me re-upload the presentation. Hold on one moment.
Paul will now sing a song from his alma mater. You guys see enough, Paul? Do you even know your alma, even know your stuff?
Matthew, can you see it now?
Can we just start over again?
Okay.
Can everybody see Slide 1? Does anybody not see it?
I can see it. You don't have to start over on my behalf.
All right. We will roll through to, we talked about that one. Kingsway, Federica, East Beach Roundabout, they're under construction now. That's going to be anywhere from four to six months of construction. Spur 25 at Altama. We are in the process of collecting the right-of-way acquisition costs. So the acquisitions coming in and what the average cost should be for the right-of-way. And once we get all of that, we will bring it to the board. Eric Jiggers.
Eric Jiggers is, that one's under acquisition also. This is the Georgia DOT grant-funded project, so we're operating under their process for acquisition. Currently in negotiations with the one parcel owner. We've got a utility agreement that's under review with Georgia Power. Once we get acquired and the utility agreement finalized, we should be ready to have Georgia DOT authorize us to go out and bid.
Federica Road, we're just doing some final scoping on the, some west side sidewalk proposals. We'll have those drawn up here shortly and get approvals on those. Arnold Tygeate, Allen Owens Construction was out there today. They received the DNR letter, gave them a 15-day hold notice, so they were able to start this week. Excuse me. College Park.
College Park's drainage project, Georgia DOT is reviewing the first cut of the plans on that. They asked that they, in an effort for them to get ahead on their review, they get a draft version to review. We're working on the environmental to establish where that wetlands are and how we can get a discharge authorization on it. That's also the one that we've reached out on the block grant for funding for it. So that should be, we should know something in the fall about whether that's awarded. This is the joint project with Fletzey. Fletzey got us information. They, Fletzey asked that we enter into a MOU in order to get people out there to do the design work. They got me some security information they want to include in the MOU. I'm doing that, and y'all should see that shortly to get authorization from the county and from Fletzey. Summersby Point, this is one that the owner of the property that we were acquiring from is actually doing, has plans in with the county to develop that site. And we're working with them to get the plans finalized, or the plans to include the drainage improvements that the county needs. This is the plan for drainage on the north side of Highway 99, west side of Highway 99. We're at a point now where the consultants got some alternatives. The plan was to present it at a workshop. Well, what I've asked them to do is prepare it, and I'm going to push it out as a, as a report to have everybody take a look at, and we can decide on whether we want to go with the board workshop or just work off of the report.
Animal Control Facility, clearing started on Saturday, about 90% complete. Should wrap up today or tomorrow as far as site clearing from the logger. And then we will, public works will get in there and destump the place. Have that ready. The joint, JWFC tap fee will be on the equal finance agenda. And then the construction bid opening is May 11.
Amen.
Dennis Memorial, we're just, parking lot striping and punch list remaining. And I believe that concludes our presentation.
Guys, all your rehearsals and your practices paid off. It was a great report, very informative, and a great amount of work that's been done in a very short period of time.